We're not doing a pledge.
Right.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three work session for the town of Aberdeen. Glad you're here, and those at home may be watching, we welcome you also. We normally meet in the conference room. This is not a town board meeting, this is a work session. And as such, the commissioners go through some of the things on the agenda to be talked about tonight, and then those that are carried forward to the town board meeting, which will be in two weeks is when they would act on them. So when I'm, while I'm saying that, this is, the reason we're in here is because we have a lot of people in here tonight, and we could not possibly fit everyone into the conference room. So normally, we would not be in here. So I just wanted to make that clear, that this is a work session, not a town board meeting. We have agendas on the table when you came in, if you would like to pick one up and look at the agenda as we go through them with the town manager, and he will be explaining some of the things that we're looking at tonight. So on the consent agenda, there are several things on there, and it goes, "All items listed below are considered routine or have been discussed at length in previous meetings will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will be held except on a request by a member of the Board of Commissioners. A. Authorize Town Manager Update Letter of Understanding with the U.S. Army to continue to conduct military training within Aberdeen with proper coordination conducted. B. Consider approval amendment to the audit contract with Forbes LLC for fiscal year twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. C. Appointment of Mayor Robbie Farrell to serve with the town, as the towns representative of the governing board of elected officials on the newly formed Sandhills Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is MPO, or other name for this organization if changed, and Commissioner Willman, lean to serve as the alternate member in case the mayor cannot attend a meeting for any reason." And Paul, did, do we want to decide to add a second now, or just wait?
Well, you could, if that's the desire of the board, you could just talk about it right now.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
And do it and leave it on consent. I mean, it could be a quick conversation if that's your...
What, what came up was, there's two. If one doesn't, cannot attend, there's an alternate, which is Ms. Laney. But then we need a second alternate, because we usually need two people there. Would someone want to be the second alternate?
I'd like to do it.
So, is that fine with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just, if you would just add to the consent agenda that there's, you're the appointee, Ms. Laney is the first alternate, and Commissioner Beavers is the second alternate, and everybody accepts that, then you're fine.
If that's fine with everyone, then we'll accept Commissioner Beavers as the alternate.
Thank you.
Second alternate. Thank you for agreeing to do that.
I'll make a motion that we sup the consent agenda with item C as amended.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second with the amendment to it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll close out number one, and we'll go to number two, which is request to discuss skate park funding. This is from Town Manager Logan King.
So yes, Mayor, this is a follow-up to a presentation from, I believe it was in June before the summer break. There's a request by the local skateboard group to help fund, along with other municipalities, a skate park that right now is planned to be built in Southern Pines. You know, it's a large effort, a lot of parties involved, and the skate group involved with this, they've submitted, which is in your packet. There were some questions about, hey, what's it gonna look like, where's it gonna be, and what's the whole process for the construction anyway going to look like. And so you see the document that's included, Skaters for More is the cover page. You've got the proposal, section one, and again, that's what's already, you know, in your packet. So I know tonight is not a public hearing, but you can see, you know, the request, you can see that, looks like the second page, first page really, summary request there in bold face, and I'll just read that for you. It's a good summary of what the ask really is. It says, "Our request is that the town of Aberdeen, along with the village of Pinehurst, join Southern Pines to make this an area skate park that will serve all three municipalities and beyond, attracting locals as well as families from outside our region. We are asking for a fifty thousand dollar donation. This will be doubled if we receive the OTPF, which is a grant, as we feel strongly we will. You can help us reach our goal of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a permanent concrete park that will serve the community for up to twenty-five years, and part of the materials include that design, so you can get a kind of get a look at, at what's there, or at least what the plan is as proposed." So I've not heard where either Southern Pines or Pinehurst are at this point. I know it's at least center discussion, but I haven't heard anything more detailed about where they are on this. So I think things to keep in mind, and again, there's no, I mean, is that Southern Pines will absorb that. It just needs to be clear in writing, and everybody's on the same page with that. So I'm not sure that's an insurmountable obstacle. I just think it's gotta be clarified before any money changes hands, if that is the intention of the board. And then the final one is the process for dispersment and oversight of any funds from the town during the construction process and planning process. That's gotta be established. So again, you know, we have a requirement for our due diligence in protecting, you know, the Aberdeen taxpayer funds, to make sure they're properly used and expended if there is a, you know, a project that's for the public good. And I think probably the easiest way, again, if the board has an inclination to support this project with any amount of funds, is to probably have some sort of agreement with Southern Pines and allow it, since it's in their jurisdiction, to oversee and to account for and audit the money, any monies that change hands. So I think, you know, those are the issues before the board, and I think all three of those have to be addressed at some point. I think we're still at the discussion stage, you know, of this part, and that's what before you tonight. I know there's some representatives, if you have a question, but I think, you know, at a work session, in our normal practices, you know, certainly a question is always fair game, but, you know, we're not trying to have a public hearing tonight. You know, there's nothing we can do in that regard.
Those are legitimate concerns for the town, as he stated a while ago. It would also be Aberdeen taxpayer money going to an entity that would not be in Aberdeen, and that's another way to add to that discussion. So we need to have that discussion amongst the board also. The fact that this may be a good project still has to go through the hoops to get anything from the town of Aberdeen, and he laid out that the, at least three of those items that we need to discuss further. I don't think tonight's the night we're going to decide on anything, because those answers have, we have not gotten those answers yet. So unless the board has another idea. Anyone?
I'd like to see a few more Ts crossed and Is dotted before we commit to anything. I'm not totally against it at all, but like Paul said, we've got money going to another municipality that we have no control over once it gets there.
Yeah, but now they're a private organization, it's not the town of Southern Pines, but it's
Still going somewhere else.
Yeah, if Southern Pines is gonna take it over, I assume they would, because it's on their property.
Absolutely.
We need to coordinate something with Southern Pines, and make sure that where this is going.
I'd also like to see what Pinehurst's stance is on it also.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything on that. Let's see if they've met to talk about it either. So I'd be interested to see what their village council would deem to be appropriate also.
But I do feel like our, our children, our young adults, whomever does skateboard, and I don't do it anymore, I have done in the past, but I feel like that Aberdeen will use it, though, even though it's not really, in the paperwork, it said it was centered between Pinehurst and Aberdeen. It's not really quite in the center, but it's still close enough that I'm sure Aberdeen would access it without any problem and go use it, once the kids find out about it. It's just a matter of how much we want to commit to.
Exactly. Any further? This was, Mr. King, were you, did you want to speak?
I do just want to clarify that we...
You gotta come to the microphone. Please tell your name, state your name.
Logan King, three oh nine, Field Drive, Aberdeen.
Thank you.
We do have in writing from Southern Pines, the few things that you did ask about. We do have a few things that Paul mentioned that we can get together for you, but that one, we do already have. We have been, my, sorry, we have been direct owners here for a while. They co-donate at a meeting last month.
Who did?
The Council of Southern Pines.
Have you gotten anything from them?
No, I mean, it's in their materials that Southern Pines has approved fifty thousand dollars toward the construction.
How much?
Fifty, yeah.
They've also...
Did he say the town of Southern Pines?
The land, that's what it is.
William, just let us know who you are, I'm sorry.
They've also committed the land, of course, seven thousand square feet at Memorial Park. They've signed up for that. They've also committed to us verbally, maybe not through resolution yet, that they would take care of the maintenance of the projects, since it's on their land. They did pass a resolution, I thought that was included in the paperwork, maybe it was not, at last month's meeting, which came alluded to, in support of the project. Regarding Pinehurst, we are still working to get on their agenda, just as we asked me to, well, you, you know, to be able to have a set conversations with them. I think the urgency at this point that we are facing is that in order for that, any contribution from either Aberdeen or Pinehurst to be doubled, should we get awarded that OTPF grant from the Tourism and Development Board, is that we would need to have secure those funds prior to October, and the funds for that grant. We have figured, we have figured a potential funding from both Aberdeen and Pinehurst, as well as several other grants that we're applying for into that.
Is that a matching grant?
It is.
Okay. So you have to have funding from all of us before you can get awarded that grant, that you applied for?
We have ninety thousand right now, so if we were to be awarded right this second, we'd, you know, we'd get the hundred eighty thousand. However, we would need the commitment from Aberdeen and Pinehurst, any other grants or whatever that we're awarded, to be able to gain those
Not necessarily the money in hand, but at least a commitment letter. Okay.
What was the total? And what's the total of the grant?
Up to two hundred thousand, which would be matching for any, you know, up to two hundred thousand. We could raise...
Okay, whatever you raise up to that point, you could get the match. Okay.
It was, you said that was from the CVB, or?
Yeah, the, the grant they have opened now, and open on Friday, we're applying for a one-time matching grant, and it's to, for projects, shovel-ready projects that from the tourism in the area, and we feel strongly that we can, it's all over that, that we kind of check all the boxes, all of what they're looking for.
But that's their general project offering they've got open, as you said, now?
Yeah, only a million plus dollars they're issuing this year.
And how much are you?
Twenty hundred thousand.
Two hundred? So you're raising two hundred, and they're gonna match with two hundred. Are you sure we're gonna ask for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Was it not on?
Could you not hear?
Okay, so if you have already talked to Southern Pines, and you have all that information that Paul is requesting, the board is requesting, then it's a matter of them formally getting that to us in some form, so that we are covered in that area. Correct?
I can make sure that happens, and I can also make sure that Paul gets the application for the, to see our application for the doubling grant. I think that might be important for you guys to see as well. We just finished that a couple days ago.
So you, so you met with the, is this a convention visitor bureau session?
Yes, sir.
And you met with them?
We have not. We've spoken with some of the board members, and we've spoken, and Town of Southern Pines has, has spoken with members suggesting that we apply for that. So we, you know, you never know, obviously, but we, we feel pretty, pretty confident in our application.
Okay.
I really think the extra tax revenue from people visiting our county is a perfect use to help the local children of this county. I think that's really important.
Anyone else? Thank you. Close number two, and go to number three. Consider approval of lease agreement for sanitation truck. Mr. Watson?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Hope you had a good summer so far. Part you have on your agenda tonight is a sanitation truck lease financing, and this is basically similar to what the board approved about a year and a half ago for another truck, just like different type of truck, and a little bit more expensive because of inflation and so forth. But if you take a look at it, this is just like we did, I think it was in November of twenty-one, where we did a lease for a vehicle. And what that means is, after five years, sanitation department will turn it in. We do not own it at all, and the reason we, we do that is because, and you can talk to Public Works Director, as well as the Assistant Public Works Director, after five years, those trucks are worn out. And this includes, all this financing includes various warranties and so forth for the items that are subject to write-down the most. So if you take a look at the, my memo, you'll see that the payments on the lease would be four thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents per month for sixty months. So that would be a total payout of about three hundred and three thousand dollars for that five-year period. So we did, we did a, excuse me, that's a tax-exempt financing, I'm sorry. If it's a operating lease, we would pay out a total of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine, about nine hundred dollars. One thing on the operating lease, we do not own it, so we have to pay property tax to ourselves and the county, but that number I'm telling you includes the estimated property tax over that five-year period. So if you take a difference of a tax-exempt financing, and we were to do one, as well as an operating lease, we are saving about, little between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars over a five-year period by doing that. So I've got my financing rate from various banks to verify that. If we did a tax-exempt financing, what would the rate be, as well as the vendors' operating lease financing, they, they are tied in with DeLaga London, a finance company, worldwide finance company. So that, so the, the recommendation is to approve the DLL lease proposal, which that's what DeLaga London goes by, and approve the documents that Pro Law Firm has already reviewed a year and a half ago, basically, so it would give myself and all the managers to sign any and all documents, and that truck is available to be picked up immediately.
At the end of this, what'd you say, four years or five years?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years.
What'd you say the savings would be?
A little between about twenty thousand and about twenty-two thousand, basically what the property tax, because that would go down since it depreciates.
Yeah, between buying it and leasing.
Yes.
So that's a lot of difference.
Yeah. And that's why we decided to do it last time, in addition with the, the way that sanitation trucks of about five years, they just, value goes down, and it's harder to get rid of a sanitation truck than it is a generator or a regular vehicle.
Joe, have you seen this truck? Thumbs up? I'll make sure. This is a good deal, and it can be picked up?
Yep. As soon as we sign the paperwork, they will probably deliver it for us.
They are, the maintenance is on us during that five period?
Normally, some of the warranty would, would cover things like a fifty thousand mile warranty, some things break down, but the general maintenance, we would do just like we'd normally do.
Okay, so the general maintenance would be on the town. Okay, that's right. That's a, and we need the truck, I know that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the financing and the lease agreement, and authorize town staff to sign documents as needed to proceed with the sanitation truck lease.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? This, this is going to turn out well for the town. It's gonna save us money, and Joe's gonna get a new truck.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Do you know where it's located?
Colonel's vehicle, I think.
So who's gonna go get it?
He said to deliver it.
Oh, they're gonna deliver it? Oh, that seems better.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good. I know when we get a fire truck, we have to go get it.
And hope it, and hope it doesn't break down on the way back.
Yeah, exactly.
Or blow a tire.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, now we go to item number four. Consider approval resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen for reimbursement for proceeds of tax-exempt financing.
Thank you again, Mayor, Board members. This is the fourth year in a row that I have brought this to the board, and what this does is, this allows the town, when we buy equipment or capital outlet items, specifically vehicles and or equipment, that we go ahead and do a reimbursement resolution. So late next May or June, when I'm doing the financing, we can capture what we pay for now, that we actually own. So I, what I normally do is make a list of all of those equipment, so, you know, it's attached to the revolution itself for exhibit A, B, and C. Exhibit A has already been approved by the board in the budget, and we are going to finance a ninety-six thousand of a hundred and ten. Then exhibit B were items that was approved by the board that we will pay cash for, but I like to list that. So for some reason, we decide to finance them, I've got it covered, but I can't go back and capture that if, at that time period, after sixty days. That's IRS regulations. Then exhibit C is one where, that's kind of a wish list item from the public works, that they keep a five- or seven-year capital plan. So I've captured some of those items that may be a maybe, just to be on the safe side. Again, all of these, you will see again if you finance them, especially the exhibit A. I would bring it back, and when I would put out RFP for financing, for tax-exempt financing, and whomever the best rate or best buy would be, then we would, I'd bring it to you for approval. So I'm just putting this to cover the bases for the purposes of IRS or reimbursement when we end, if we do do a financing.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three dash seventeen for reimbursement from the proceeds of tax-exempt financing.
Now, second.
Motion and a second. Discussion from the board. Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Harold, I know you stepped out when we had to vote. We, we got you a new sanitation truck, and it's got a ISO rating on it.
It's got an...
Yes.
Red, it's nice and bright.
Yes, it's red, and it's gonna have a, a number on it, yeah, so you're, you're...
We could try and make it better if we get Philip to drive it.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what you're doing.
Number five, consider appointment of Leslie Havitz to post four on downtown Aberdeen Advisory Board with the term expiration, one January, two thousand and twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Pretty standard, we had a position come open with Lindy stepping down to become a full-time employee with the town. Mrs. Leslie Havitz from Jack Hayden requested to take that post, number four, for the board, and we are bringing it here today, and asking you to make a motion in consideration.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ms. Havitz to post four of the downtown Aberdeen Advisory Board for the term.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. I think she'll be a good fit.
She will. It's gonna be awesome.
I think she'll be a great fit for that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Probably, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but we're talking about the downtown, and I know you're strong. I get that. You're shorthanded, and I know there's a lot of things, even the article in the paper, you saw it probably in the pilot, about all the planters in this area were just underwater with everything coming to our towns.
Yes, sir.
What I would suggest, as a recommendation, if a downtown business, that's not a corporate business, has a ribbon code, it's on us. If it's a corporate business, it's on them. So we, we won't welcome these downtown businesses, because we're not gonna get a Chick-fil-A downtown Aberdeen, that's corporate. But these people that are opening stores on their own, I know that we can still have a ribbon cutting on South Street when, what's the other, what's the other one that's gonna open?
La Fata, La Fatae or something. Fatae.
She's gonna have an opening...
The Fourth Friday.
The Fourth Friday.
That's what she's planning on.
I think, and we could do one for her, and just walk down to two doors, I guess, and do one for the dress shop.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. You know, historically, I kind of look back into this since the chamber, that people apply.
They're not a member of the chamber.
And, and if you're not a member of the chamber, then they would manage their ribbon cutting for, for their business, and we would invite the mayor. But if it's something that you want the planning department to take on extra...
Is, we've got a plaid ribbon, we've got the scissors. I'm just suggesting, if it's downtown, we do it.
Just in central business.
Just, just a central business.
We've done it for other businesses.
For, over, over the years, we've done it for businesses that open in downtown. But, but again, if it's a corporate business, and I'm not trying to exclude them, but they can do their own, and we can attend. If they'll invite us, we'll be there.
Yeah.
For, for a corporate event. Now, I know there was one just the other day.
The dental, that was a celebration.
The ten-year, the ten-year celebration.
The ten-year dental business up here, well, the shopping centers, and a number of us attended, but they did it, because it was a corporate event. And just like, was it Dunkin' Donuts?
Dunkin' Donuts.
They, that was a corporate event, and they did their own, which got no problem with it. If they'll invite us, we'll be there. But I just think it's, it behooves us, if we can get somebody to come downtown and open a business, that should, we should support them by doing that.
Okay, yes, sir.
If you see a business anywhere in the downtown area that's wanting to do it, we'll, we'll be there. But when is, when is she gonna do this?
She said something about the Fourth Friday.
Fourth Friday. So we could probably get two in there, just one her, do her, and then just walk down two more doors and get the dress shop, if we got enough people that want to do that. Does that sound good?
That's pending, pending building permits and getting...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so as soon as they want to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to put too much more, more work on you, but we're, we're just keeping it downtown.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So we close out five, and go to number six. Consider approval of kiosk vinyl wrap concept, and authorize staff to submit concept to Meridian Kiosk.
So as you all know, you approved the, the kiosk about a month and a half ago, and it's in production right now. It takes eight to twelve weeks for them to fully produce it, and then, and then bring it into the town of Aberdeen, and we gotta do a couple connection things, and I'm sure that we have the, the exact spot that it's gonna go into. With that being said, part of the production is the vinyl wrap, so we put together three different concepts in the planning department, and wanted to bring it to the board for consideration, one of them, and, and ask for a motion, so that we can send that to them, and they produce it with the, the... and, and ask for a motion so that we can send that to them and they produce it with the, the, uh, kiosk itself.
Can anybody see this?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I like all three of them. I think they're all three nice. I know we've had some, did we have some trash cans or something at the park? They had the old, the old scenes from downtown on it. So I don't know if that holds up. I'm just, just thinking about it, you know?
It's down the road.
It's, it should hold. It's different.
Okay.
Those were, I think, stickery or something.
I, I really like Aberdeen Shop the Crossroads because that is Aberdeen.
Our, our, our brand.
It's like a trademark now.
It's a trademark sort of thing for us.
It's like our brand.
I think that would be very good. That's my opinion.
I agree.
I agree too.
If you're looking at the.
Uh, my three picks, I would've picked the, the logo.
If you're looking at the old picture, uh, the top left.
This is a planning meeting, so you can discuss.
I like the top two.
That's.
I like that one. I like that one.
That's, that's actually Main Street when it was.
I know, it's cool.
As you're looking down.
Put a bow on it.
And you're looking down at the library, the, the street.
Wow.
And on the right, the two-story building was the old hotel.
I know, that's a good one also.
But yet you notice also, there's, there's some big trees right in the building downtown. You see them?
Yes, yes.
And we don't have any more.
Yeah, that, yeah, the only one, yeah.
Kinda has a pinehurst feel to it.
Uh, about nineteen forty somewhere along there and the hotel burned down.
Yeah, I like the top one or the bottom one. I like either one of them.
So except the, whatever the opposite.
What did Wilma say? So I think everybody shared. Which one do you like, Wilma?
Which one you like?
Uh, I like the one that's, uh, Aberdeen, that's one.
This one to you.
One that I'm. It's in, in tune with everybody else.
That sounds like your consensus.
Okay.
The one with the ribbon on it.
I heard the other two say they like the bottom, and both of us like both of the two on the side, so that kinda splits the town.
Pretty much, the consensus is.
It is.
There you go. I guess with the, uh, the Aberdeen, what does it say, Shop the Crossroads?
Yes, I like that.
Yeah.
I like that one or the one on the, one above it, either one's, I mean, I think they're both.
I like them both too.
Well, if we get.
I like all of them, but.
Yeah. But out of the three, I like them two the best.
If we get, if we get another one, something.
That's an idea.
Gonna get another picture.
Yeah.
They don't all have to be the same.
The, the thing with the one with the hotel, nobody would know what that is.
I thought about that too.
You wouldn't, 'cause you're old, Robbie, but.
Robbie knows.
Right, they may look at it and not, and may think it's some other town somewhere. Newcomers, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
They'll not connect, but they'll connect to the logo. They'll know the tartan and the train.
I have seen these, uh, pictures, and maybe not on a kiosk, and we, we don't have anybody here that can get involved in it because it is, it takes some work. I have seen them where they split the picture. And half the picture is the old, looking down the street, and the other half is new.
Yes, sir.
I like that.
Yeah, I, I, for about, and we can, you know, our landscape planner, Mike's amazing, so, uh, if we decided to do something like that in the future, if we were to get another one, then we could bring a concept just like that.
Or, or I've, I've seen them where they did a diagonal, and you see the black and white.
And then.
Color.
And then the other half, the other half, the other diagonal is what it looks like today. And I think that's neat. I've seen those before, uh, in other towns. And, uh, that brings out the history and, uh, you know, it's con- continuity. You see what it used to look like, you see what it looks like today, and that's, that gets people to stop and think about it.
Those are ideal with that story photo. As, as you were standing there on the corner, you're looking down, and that's what you were looking at.
Like Tim said, I don't know how many people would know that that's the library down at the end of the street. It's still there.
That's right.
Yeah. But you'd have to know that. But, uh, but we could look at some of those. I just think it's, we're missing something when we not, we're not advertising our history like this. And so, uh, that's something we can look at it at another time.
Good mural ideals too.
Well, yeah. That's right.
Well, we had to talk about, one time when we closed the lab, the page memorial library, turning that into like a, maybe a historic.
We don't have a museum. We, the town needs a museum.
Yes, exactly. And Coscarthage has one.
We need a museum.
And we need one. And I was thinking that would be just a good thing to have outside the museum, not even a kiosk.
There's enough stuff in my house from Aberdeen I can bring down there for a museum.
Um, the only thing I was gonna say, that, that beige, if there's any way we could change the beige.
On these?
On the kiosk. I mean, the.
You mean the, the wood?
The background.
The wood plank at the bottom portion?
No, the.
Oh, the beige behind it.
Our banners, our banners are beige, and then the, and the, and then the brand is so colorful. It almost seems like if we could do a different, a different color than just the beige, because it already looks washed out.
Well, that was, that's probably a photograph of one that's been hanging.
I just wondered if we could change the background color, just.
A little bit lighter?
It's your all's choice.
You're talking about making it lighter?
The background, uh, color, we could do any color. We just, we just need.
White might look better than beige.
White's gonna get very dirty.
It's, it's gonna, on that corner, it's gonna get dirty.
Okay. That's fine. I just kinda like this tree over here with the white, and the green tree is pretty too.
Alright, so here we are. We got it. Thank you.
Do we wanna make a motion on it, sir?
Yeah. So I'm gonna make a motion.
At least.
I make, I make a motion. I made the motion for the approval of the kiosk vinyl wrap concept and authorize the staff to submit concept to the Meridian Kiosk.
Motion is there, sir?
Which, which, which one?
With the one with Aberdeen.
Rain.
Aberdeen Shop the Crossroads.
Shop the Crossroads.
Second.
Alright. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you. Post six. Alright, let's go to number seven. Consider approval of Saunders Street pedestrian traffic flow improvements concept in an amount of twenty-five thousand and authorize staff to begin the informal bidding process for concrete improvements and begin internal improvements of paint and signage.
So, uh, board, Mr. Mayor, uh, as you all know, we have a lot of concerns, citizens over on Saunders Street to continue to, uh, uh, raise the concerns of the speed on that road, even though it's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, and, uh, uh, myself and Public Works have requested twenty-five thousand dollars to make improvements throughout the road to include paint, some medians, a couple bump outs, and then, uh, adding in stop signs at two different block sections, um, so that we can not only improve the road, but, but improve the, or make sure that the, the speed slows down through there by adding in those stop signs and, and having clear defined new paint within that, in cross sections. So the ideal, and if you can look, these are, these are little curb concrete buffers within here. These are little bump outs that come out through here, and then adding in the stop signs.
Where is this exactly?
Saunders Street, right over, uh.
Near Ray's Hill Park.
No, 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 no.
North, uh.
Saunders over here.
It's going.
Cloninger Heights.
Oh, Cloninger Heights, by the park. Okay. That's what I thought at first, but then I put.
Take a left or take a right on the five, and then take that first left and then right up the road.
Okay.
And then, I'll show you the.
What's that? Same road you had a problem with the trucks going through, and we put a sign up, and that hasn't helped. And I know, yeah, I got it.
The park's over here. Yeah.
That's the overall overhead view of it, so actually adding in three stop signs. Um, and we're just asking that you all approve the concept so that we can go ahead and start making these improvements.
So it'll be one four-way stop and one three-way stop? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. One's a, one's a T.
That's what, yeah, which is a three-way stop? You got one three-way stop and one four-way stop. Is that correct?
Two, two four-ways, two four-ways.
Oh, I didn't see, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the other one at the bottom of the screen.
Two fours and a three.
Okay, I didn't see one on the bottom.
Yeah.
Alright, gotcha. No, okay, yeah.
There's been talk about this for a long time.
That's right.
And I think this is a step in the right direction.
The citizens over there have been talking about it for a number of years.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is progress. And they actually built a new homes over there.
Yes, they are.
It's the first homes that's been built over there in years and years.
I think there are two over there, aren't there?
There's four homes, four, three on one street and then one down the street.
Okay. That's amazing.
I think the, the ideal of, uh, using the, the current setup and really improving that pedestrian, um, these sides here are really gonna open up a lot of the community using that road to, to walk on and feel safe as well or ride their bikes.
So is this kinda like a start on the other issues that we had with speeding that we've talked about in the past?
It's, it's a start.
Yeah, 'cause I know Tim had shared some ideas with us. Is this one of your ideas?
Well, this is one that he, he was talking about.
This was one of your ideas?
A what?
Remember, you presented several ideas for speeding when we had issues.
And this was one of them. This was one of them.
Okay. Alright, well, that's good to start somewhere.
I think this is the road that had the most complaints.
Versus.
Yeah.
Pop, I know poplar was always an issue, but.
South Street was one of them.
Yeah.
Yes, south and poplar.
Yeah.
As you said a while ago, this, the posted speed limit is twenty-five, and the police chief knows that's just a suggestion.
I was over there this weekend when somebody ried my bumper, and I was doing twenty-five miles an hour, and they were riding my bumper all the way down the road.
Yeah. Well, this'll, this'll stop some of this.
Yeah.
And I know the citizens are very gonna appreciate it when you get this.
So are you admitting to speeding? Because the speed limit is twenty down there, isn't it?
I was doing twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I was rolling. Can't really go much slower. At least I wasn't doing fifty-five or sixty like that, like some of them. I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the Saunders Street pedestrian slash traffic flow improvements concept in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and authorize staff to begin the informal bidding process.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Do you know, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight, consider approval of Talbot Street parking lot thirty-year parking lease agreement subject to a final review by the Aberdeen Town Attorney.
So we've been in coordination with, uh, Mr. Spear for some time now. He's the owner of the building right across the street here where the wine shop is, and there's a parcel right behind his, uh, store that is separate from the parcel that his businesses are in that he owns as well. Uh, right now, it's, that is, uh, uh, it's just, it's just gravel within there. It, it's, it's kinda overgrown a little bit, and it could use some improvement. So he and I have been in talks for the last couple of months. I presented him the ideal of a thirty-year lease agreement to where we would potentially be able to improve that area adding it into the Talbot project, and, um, and, and if he was to agree to that, uh, thirty-year lease, that would be our payment to him, is pavement curving better within that area. When it is finished, what you see here, I'm gonna blow this up for you. This area right here that I'm circling. This is his area where these five parking places are. Where this area is, is ours. So the overall concept would change it from his here to this by adding it into the Talbot project.
And anyone could park there?
Yes.
So then.
It would be open public parking.
Alright, so then the, the lady that's designated her parking behind the hair salon.
I've been working it.
Is that part of that?
No, ma'am.
But you're working with her to see if we can make that part of this project?
We're working that section, which is right over here, and then we're also working this section H.
Okay.
To see, but that would be in a different project because right after this one, I'll bring the concept of the construction plans for Talbot, so we're ready for that one as well to send it out for the informal bidding process. Uh, so I was bringing the thirty-year lease agreement to you because we can add that in, and it's not gonna change our overall cost as that part of the, uh, the, the project was already getting improved minus a small portion of it. So thinking that it's gonna be minor cost and fit into the actual hundred and fifty thousand that's already approved for Talbot parking.
I'm all about picking up parking places.
Me too. And that's all I hear when I'm out on the campaign trail.
So this will take us.
Parking, so it's in the after.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
How many parkings would be in the after?
We're adding theirs in. So right now, we're at thirty-two parking places. Once we finish this project, we'll be at fifty-six.
Oh, wow. Just in the back of this.
And that's.
From here all the way around.
So, so the fifty-six would be counting?
That will be counting those nine parking places that are in that lease agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
That's at the full build, that's at full build out?
Exactly.
I'm sorry, sir.
That would be at full build out?
Yes.
Okay.
Which I'll present right after this.
Right, okay.
Right, so this is kind of a two-step process. This is really just the lease, which if the board approves it, TC will work out the details, and I think, um, the attorney for the property owner is involved with that, so that's good.
Yes, sir.
Pretty straight up. I mean, it's pretty much the property owner's agreeing to, um, allow us to, you know, use it for public parking. But in return, you know, we're paving it at our cost, which to make it good.
We're improving his property.
So he's getting a pretty good benefit, and, um, I think they realize that it's, it's a good, it's a good situation for all. The other, um, parcels that John mentioned around the corner, we might get those and add to that fifty-six number, which would be great, but we don't wanna spend another two years trying to get four more spaces and still be having this conversation. So John, to his credit, is moving this forward. We can get this done, get the paving done. We can pave another four or five spaces anytime we want, you know, and add on to it. So it's a good, as you all, you all, and you all know that area better than most. I mean, if we can really have that input of parking, um, the, the people in the downtown area, they will find it. They will know that. The regular visitors will know, hey, I can park there and walk through and, and get to the areas. You, as we've talked about many times here, you know, you can't always have a parking lot right, or parking space or a lot for that matter, right in front of your store. There's only so much that's there. Most of that's already paved and is there. When those four spaces are gone, then you've got to look elsewhere. That's the nature of a downtown. So this is really the, honestly, the biggest step in terms of adding a significant number of parking spaces that we've taken in the last probably twenty years.
Yeah. It's a step in the right direction.
Yes.
And, and I think a really important thing with, uh, Paul has stated is this lease agreement is still in its draft form. It is with our town attorney for a second review, um, and it's with the property owner's attorney as well. Uh, we think we're about at ninety-nine percent on it, but there could be minor corrections within that based off of our attorney or his attorney, but the concept itself would still be the same, and the agreement to thirty-year lease would still be the same.
Is this, uh, narrowing down Knight Street?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is Knight Street being narrowed down?
It is. Yes, sir.
To make it truly a.
It's gonna be a true one-way.
Truly a one-way. Yeah, because now it's still, people think it's a two-way street. A lot of people still think that.
Yes, it does.
Uh, I, I had a, I had a twofer the other day. I was coming down Sycamore South, and I got to where your store, your buildings are, and somebody came up, Maple, turned one way to go down Sycamore. But wait a minute, they got down to the fee store and then turned right, which is another one-way. So that was a twofer. He, they did one way twice.
On, on Sycamore, we need another sign about fifty feet in.
We don't have it.
Because people don't see that one right.
We do not. That's something, look, look, look right here. Look, look right here.
Harold had said they've run out of signs to put on that store, or on that, but those three, there's just, there's no more room for.
Well, there is room. We can find some way to put another sign up there. You're right. That one, when they turn that corner, they don't see the sign.
Yeah, it's too close to the intersection.
It, it's too close to the corner. If, if it was backed off a little bit or hanging ribbons or something like, because that, that car actually did two one-ways the wrong way, and I sat there and watched it. Got right down there and turned and went right back down Knight Street the wrong way.
Well, I got one for you. I was coming up Knight Street, uh, a couple of months ago, in the correct direction, and actually had an ambulance coming towards me the wrong direction, and he actually went up on the sidewalk in front of me, just beyond the neon rooster, just so that I was, so that we wouldn't collide because it was cars parked there. So he actually rode the curb all the way down till he got to the end.
I, I agree with you. I know there's two signs there. I understand that, but where they are, most people, when they get to that corner, they don't see them because they're, they're right there where they turned the corner, instead of a little bit farther.
In the last two days, I've engaged a semi-truck and a car coming down through there, almost hitting me both, both times.
Well.
Because I'm looking right to see if anything's coming and not, you know, before I pull out.
I came up to turn, uh, on, I went up here to turn to go up north on Sycamore, and they had a forklift up against where the building is, along in there. And so I was, I'm riding in the middle of the street because that's what you can do. It's, yeah, it's a one-way street. And so I was, I'm riding in the middle of the street cause that's what you can do. It's, yeah, it's a one-way street. Well, here comes some person, came towards me, there was a forklift and I was in the middle of the road and during it, they didn't go between us. They were determined to get one-way on that one, the one-way. And I thought if, if I'd have been a little bit farther over, that person would have hit me on, on the one-way street. I, I, another thing we, people say, why don't you put a big arrow out there? I don't, I don't know why we don't paint a dagger on the arrow on the street. Do something. Cause what I'm telling you is not working.
That, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know that, uh, you know, I'm not sure that anything will help. But I, I will tell you that at, at a part of, part of this revitalization that, you know, if, if this works out well and then truncate Knight, as you, as you talked about. That would be the same concept for Sycamore too.
Exactly.
And so when you build, you know, uh, at the corner of Syc- Sycamore, Maple, you know, some concrete out.
Yes.
Then you just try to truncate it to a actual lane.
Truncate it down.
So it'd probably be the next phase of improvements.
Would it be, would it make any difference to put these, uh, the parallel parking lines against the railroad track? That wouldn't.
But then you got people crossing the road to get.
Well, I, I was just thinking if you had parking lines along there, would that help? I don't know if that'd make any difference or not.
We would, uh, look to put parallel, I mean, actually not the railroad tracks, but the other side because we have parallel already in front of the feed store right there.
Either one.
But continue it down.
Yeah.
Some loading zone.
I was just thinking that might narrow it down some. I don't know.
I think it would help.
But, but concrete, you know, really.
That would help.
Helps people. Or they ride over it, but.
I think the, the semi trucks coming down that, that street have been doing it for years and, and don't realize that it's changed to a one-way now. So I think that's the reason why they come down that way.
I, I got to, I, about where the feed store is and I was turning left to go up Sycamore, comes a pickup truck. And I knew while they were there, they were gonna pick up feed and seed for horses or whatever.
I'd say.
And, and he got to me and the guy had his nice, I don't know who the guy was, but he has one down. I just leaned out and I said, it's a one-way street. And he looked at me and said, I know it's a one-way street. So there's, there you go. I know it's a one-way street. And you know the old story, I'm only going one-way. You remember that?
Yeah. Well, that street's blocked. Sycamore, uh, and you're going down with their, cause there was a horse trailer and a truck there. This is my story. Now I've got one.
Going the one-way?
No, parked in front of the feed store. I guess they were picking up horse feed. I don't know. So then I had to back out. Well, I can't turn right down Knight, cause that's a one-way. So I had to back all the way into the Galaxy parking lot and turn around and go back up Sycamore. So I thought, maybe we need to look at this again. I know we did it before. We discussed this about when I was on ABC committee because of all those trucks just stopping and unloading right there in front of the feed store. And, uh, former planner made those decisions. We talked about it, but maybe we need to revisit that. I don't know.
I don't think so.
There's nothing else. We're doing it.
Trust me, I drove it every way and we gave that store two years to fix their problem. And what happens when you have two-way is you have two trucks doing just what you're talking about, blocking the whole road. I'm talking about daily basis.
Well, I'd leave that truck one way. I'd leave Sycamore all that one-way, but I wonder if opening Knight back up.
If you don't have the police chief's, uh, cell phone number, uh, speed dial, you see that? You go there, you park in front of that truck, you call him, he'll have somebody down there in two minutes and, um, they'll talk to the truck truck.
Yeah, I think there and then down Knight Street's gonna make a big difference. I, I think that'll change some of this, uh, in just making sure the people coming down Sycamore know which way is the one-way.
So I think we've got the, um.
That's right.
We've got the motion now is just to, um, allow the lease to move forward on the, on the smaller one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Talbooth Street parking lot thirty-year lease agreement after the final review and approval by the town attorney. And also authorize staff to sign as needed.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, consider approval of Talbooth's parking lot construction plans and authorize staff to begin informal bidding process for the current plans. And you see the current plans approved.
Sir, board, uh, again, you, you all have, uh, reviewed these, but this is a project that's been ongoing for, for years. I think I looked back and it started, I think it was two thousand sixteen or seventeen was initial concepts of this. Um, and then the last six months, the department was able to get this surveyed, get the construction plans put together. And I'm ready to get this thing pushed into the construction phase to start breaking ground. So with your approval, uh, the concept, we'll push this out for the informal bid and, and, uh, once we have the final pricing back from the bidding, I'll bring it to the board one more time for approval. And then we'll start break, breaking ground.
I make a motion that we consider the approval, I make a motion that we approve the Talbooth Street parking lot construction plans and authorize staff to begin the formal bidding process for the current plans.
A second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Uh, this, does this take more than one bid? Is it, Paul, would this be a, we have to have more than one bid on this?
More than one bid.
Yes.
Uh, informal, I think technically no, but you try to get to.
Yeah, okay.
Right here?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll hope so.
I, I, I think we will too.
I think we'll.
Okay.
We got a number of contractors we'll sit it straight out too, but we wanna have three have some competitive pricing.
Sure. Okay. Alright, thank you. Further discussion. Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Close nine, we'll go to number ten. Update on US Highway One Lake Park Crossing Project, consider authorized staff to move forward with allowing Duke Energy to temporarily remove the light poles from the road fringe on US Highway One and replace the light poles once the easement is signed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and board, uh, this is, this is not a new project either, but we were able to push this one into, this physical year. Uh, was supposed to be a twenty-six project, but DOT was able to acquire funding within their end-of-the-year budget to push this one into, uh, into this FY. With that being said, we've been able to lock in this project that would cost us two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars at estimate. Uh, the town's cost at fifty-six thousand dollars. The issue that we're running into right now with the overall project is that there are three light poles within the current US One easement running across the front of, uh, Lake, Lake Park. That Duke needs an easement in order to replace the poles with new ones. And the Lake Park was, uh, awarded a federal grant and then also state grants that were from the Land and Water Conservation Fund and then the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Those are on a backlog right now for about twelve months in order to get, uh, approved easement for Duke. So we've been working with DOT and Duke and we've come up with an option to remove those three light poles temporarily until we can get an easement. Um, and then once we do, we'd have an agreement with Duke that, once the easement was signed, that they would come in and replace those with, with new poles. That leaves us with, um, with having the project complete by April thirty-first of twenty-four. And then we'd start one January of twenty-four. Everything's already ordered for this project. And there's the, the actual crossing arms are the only thing that's holding it up from getting started earlier. Uh, but those are expected to be delivered around October or November. So then they push the start date to January. Any questions?
Wasn't the crosswalk originally further north on one of the concept plans?
The, the crosswalk is gonna be on Maple Street, right up here.
Oh yeah.
Well, they were.
But it affects this entire, this is part of the overall, the superhighway project as well.
Well, they've got the cross.
Getting built into it.
They've got the crosswalk down more su- south according to this plan, but I thought originally it was.
It was in the middle.
It was in the middle, right.
How was it?
It was from, yeah. Yeah, it was in the middle. It was between Main Street and Maple. It was in the middle.
Okay.
Right.
Ridge way.
Okay.
It's not there now.
Yeah, it's a little, it's, yeah, it's, it's more up by, what is that, Twigs and Company?
Okay, well, it's, that's.
Is that, is that where, is that where it was originally at?
Well, that's about where it was, yeah.
Okay. I, I was thinking it was more up here for some reason.
That's where it was.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
I thought this was gonna be subterranean. Under the ground, under the road.
Mm-mm.
Is that not, not here?
We all, we do have one that is down the road from there closer to Elm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we talked about making sure they were gonna keep that one.
One of the old elementary schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew that one.
Okay.
So maybe really this is, um, the same project we've been trying to get going and DOT has really held it up. But with this accommodation, we're really just taking advantage of that window of opportunity to start it on Jan- on January one.
Yeah.
Work around the delay. I mean, really when they see the actual light poles, they're gonna see that doesn't impact any of the old park improvements at all. But until we get that approved, which unfortunately just takes too long, um, we won't be just waiting for that and then put this project back another year. So this is really just a workaround. Um, the only downside really is that there'll be, um, those three lights. We won't have them for a while. That's a pretty well-lit area in general with just natural lighting. I don't think that'll be a big issue. But then as soon as we get that approval, Duke will put them back up, the same lease program and they'll, they'll be, they'll be up and running. So, um, and we'll probably have similar issues with US One improvement anyway with the lights being disrupted for a while. So we just have to kinda get used to that, um, a little bit, um, with that. But this is the best way forward to get this project done, I think.
It should be back up April forty-first. Or I don't know.
No, that's the, the project completion date, ma'am.
So the lights will come up after the.
The poles, I, so I've sent in the, uh, the request for an extension of their policy three months ago. Um, and they said that it's taking about a year or so, about nine months from now, hopefully, uh, we will have that easement back. So at, at the end of the day, this is a protection step so that we can start on one January in case the easement doesn't come back from, uh, the, from the, uh, Land and Water Conservation Fund.
I make a motion that, uh, we authorize staff to move forward with allowing Duke Energy to temporarily remove the light poles. And, uh, replace the light poles once the easement, lease, uh, easement agreement is signed.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any known, motion carries. Thank you. Number eleven, discussion on condemned properties.
Alright. It's been a talk that we've had over every board session I've been in, I think since I arrived in, uh, January. So instead of just bringing, uh, two to you, I brought the nine condemned properties that we have within Aberdeen. Uh, and I wanted to just kinda talk to you and, and give you the process of what it would take to go ahead and, and demolish these properties. Some are gonna be more difficult than others due to, and I'll give you the example, two hundred Glasgow Street is filled with asbestos. So that one would take a lot more, uh, to demolish and it's gonna, it's not gonna be cost efficient to the town. However, it's still in there, it's still there and we can still move forward with the process and have it, um, have it ready in case we did want to put it into a budget year and, and demo that property. Um, so what that means is step one is that we have our, our building inspector condemn these properties. A lot of these properties have been condemned already for, for years.
Yes.
And they've just been sitting there and, um, now they've become a place where, where squatters stay. And there's illicit activities that take place within them. It's not very safe. Children can get into them. Um, so myself and the chief building inspector are looking for ways to go ahead and demolish those properties. And then we would place a lien on those properties, um, to where the property owners would be able to get them back as long as they pay this back for what we spent on demolishing those properties. So we've already completed step one and now with your, um, uh, with a motion to, to direct us to move forward, then I'll go ahead and do a public notice of all of them. And then we would bring it back to the, the next board and we would be able to issue an order to bait by violation. And that those owners go again to take action and we have the ability to remove those structures and then place a, uh, a lien on those properties in accordance with one sixty T D and general statute.
The, obviously the six-eleven, I assume there's a house in there.
Yeah, some of these, some of these properties that I'll give you an example, six fifteen. You, when you go up to it, it's like the, the trees and the, the vegetation is growing through some of these locations.
Oh yeah, yeah. I mean, this, this, obviously we need to address this.
Yes.
Uh, we're a growing town. Uh, I think the last number is something like ten thousand. People are still moving here and this is, this is not what we want to have people see. Uh, and nobody wants to live by one of, beside one of these. That, that's what, that's what gets me is, I mean, there's people probably looking out their window wondering what's gonna ever become of some of these dilapidated properties. And, uh, we have the legal right to do this. I mean, that's one of the general statutes. If it's dangerous or falling down or whatever, we can condemn it, uh, give public notice. Try to track down the owners. Part of the problem is tracking down anybody that owns them.
Yeah, we, and we've, we've consistently, and we've been using our lawyer to try to track down, uh, people within some of these properties as well through. Another example is the church ten fifty PD road. We've exhausted every way that we possibly could to contact, um, the owners. Including I, I found in South Carolina where that church has maybe a, a sub-church of this one that they stood up and tried to contact them, reached out to them, called them, no answers. Um, so I, I think that we're in a good place with your, uh, with the motion that we can go ahead and make one more last public notice. Uh, we will run a public hearing to, uh, demolish these properties if they are not, uh, if nobody comes back to us and speaks to us about them. And then in two weeks from now, we can come with a motion to demolish these properties. And again, this is, this is gonna be a thing that requires budget, so we'll have to prioritize which properties get demolished based on our demo budget that we currently have. And it, it's probably gonna be one a year, maybe two a year depending on that budget and what it currently is.
Well, uh, in the past, uh, if we, if they're, where they can be, they can, they could be used as a training aid for the fire department. They love to burn these old houses down. So, uh, in, it, in the past, when the fire department's done it, other fire departments from out of town and, uh, from around the county, they'll send firemen down here to do the training. It's a, it's a big training aid to burn these old houses down because they get a chance to go inside of a structure while it is burning. And I know the one that burned over here on, uh, was it High Street? You had firemen from all over down here going in, into the fire to get the training. I mean, they just don't have anywhere else to do this. So, uh, some of them can be burned other than trying to demolish them and trying to haul off everything. If we, if we can burn them, if it's possible, that eliminates a lot of the hauling off, you know, having to take things to the dump. So whatever we decide to do, whichever ones you choose to do, if you got the funds, if we don't have the funds, folks, we need to start thinking about adding some more money to his.
I agree.
To him because if he says two, maybe two a year, we got how many? We're talking about three?
We got none.
Nine. So we're talking about, what, four years? Four or five years before we ever get through with it.
And we don't know which one of those pro- our properties currently have asbestos.
That's true.
Minus two hundred Glasgow, so that's where the budget could.
I would suggest doing the low, low hanging fruit. Start with that first and then work your way back. And then work your way back to the ones that have asbestos in them. And coordinate with the fire department, they, they would, I'm sure they would be more than happy to help out. And they've burned houses, a number of, I've been to several where they've burned these old houses down. And it, it's great, it's great training for the fire, firemen and his personnel.
Is there one on, um, group one also?
Where, whereabouts on one?
Across from Aberdeen Elementary.
Going up toward, uh, it's, it's going toward the fire department, it's on the right hand side.
Yeah.
That, yeah, it's, it, it belongs to.
Ron Jackson.
It belongs to Ron Jackson. He's, he's, yeah, he, he bought the house.
It, it's gonna be demolished, I believe, when they do the turnaround.
I think that's part of the, the US one superhighway, it's, it's gonna get demolished.
Do you remember, do you remember Jack Smith? He was, yeah, Jack Smith built that house, probably sixty years or seventy years ago, but he was the town commissioner. That house, that thing. Yeah, that's, that was his house.
I agree, it needs to go to Wilma, it looks rough.
Yeah. The, which one, that one?
The one that she's talking about.
Yeah, um, but I think highways gonna deal with that, I think. But Mr. Jackson did buy it, from what I understand, I don't know if he still owns it or not. But anyway, okay, where are we?
Make a motion to condemn these houses.
Yeah, somebody make, you want a motion?
Oh, do we need a motion?
Yeah, he needs a motion, somebody make a motion that we start with the, this.
I'll make a motion that we start the process of, um, looking at getting rid of these houses.
I second it.
Motion is second, any further discussion? And you will come up with the ones that you wanna start with and if they can be burned, other than torn down, make sure the fire department knows about it.
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Number twelve, discussion on Aberdeen, Carolina Western Railroad, South Street Crossing.
This is, uh, more information, sir, for, uh, it was, it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago. I, I'd heard, uh, different conversations that ACWR and DOT talking about putting in a railroad crossing over there on Sycamore and South Street to, to, um, improve the safety around that area. Um, I think, Mr. Mayor, this is something that you've had conversations with ACWR with and DOT. It crossed my desk a couple of weeks ago and, and I started moving forward on this. As of right now, this project is just in talks, it's just a concept, it, there's been no decision on it. Um, but what we do know is August twenty ninth, ourselves as the town, uh, DOT and ACWR are all going to visit the site for, uh, preliminary, uh, site review. And, and, and then expand those discussions and see if it is a proper location to, uh, place in the, the railroad crossing. So again, this is more of a, uh, information than, than a motion. But, uh, I wanted to update you, 'cause I've heard a lot of different conversations about it and that it was happening or it wasn't happening. Um, and I just wanted to flatten the lines of communication so everybody knew exactly where we stood with it.
What, what kind of safety improvements are they talking about, Lee?
Putting in a railroad crossing signal, the, the arm.
Oh, okay.
You know, they just stand somebody out in the street now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what they do right now, they, they'll have somebody, you know, uh, meet them down there with a truck and then they, they stand in the street and.
Yeah, they've sent a number, I, I don't know how many you've got, and I may forward them to you, they've sent me a number of letters. Wanted to get together, decide what to do about that, so. So this, this is the twenty nine office, okay, thank you. And this was just for discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you're meeting, who's meeting with you, do you know?
I'll, I'll be there and I'll probably bring, uh, Joe Wood or, or Harold Wood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on number twelve? If not, I'll close it out. Thirteen, discussion regarding offer to purchase portions of the whole Aberdeen Elementary School and process, and process moving forward.
Who is that?
So Mayor, uh, no, I have this one. So Mayor, um, you've got your packet and, so really, this is, um, this is a point that we've been, uh, looking forward to for, uh, some time now. Since we purchased the old Aberdeen Elementary School, since it includes both the school proper property minus the gym and auditorium. With the understanding that there'll be a joint use of the parking lot that we've always envisioned. And then it also, so that's one offer, and that amount of that, or, you know, as submitted in the offer, was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that tract. The second tract is town property that we've always owned or owned for the last hundred years or so. Surround that, not, it's, it's, it's next to it and it's important to the project, but it was not owned by the school at any time. This is all just town property. That tract, the offer is five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Of course, the project that was planned and planned development needs both of these properties. Um, the school property, so back to that, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer. And if you look at the, um, the notes, um, and the conclusions, you'll see those are laid out in, um, in the attachments in different colors, um, and highlighted, trying to make it clear which properties are which. Those are all part of the planned development. And the idea is to have these clo- uh, closed, closed in time, if not the same day. But they are two separate transactions. And I know there was some discussion in the past, and, you know, we have an agreement, um, we purchased this property from the school system. Remember, we paid some, something over nine hundred thousand dollars for the entire tract. That did include, of course, we owned our property already. So we're, we would be selling a portion of the school property and maintaining a portion of it. So we're not selling the whole amount. But based on the appraised value that was assumed and placed in the agreement with the school system, the four fifty pretty much matches exactly the value of that property that's, um, that's being sold for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So part of that agreement was, well, if we sold it for a profit, which we're not, that portion, we would have a percentage share with the school system. At this price, we won't have to do that, uh, which is fine, I mean, I don't think the school system expected to make money, but that's where that situation lies. Um, there's a lot of work to go into the improvements with the, uh, school property. There could be demolition, you know, it's tough to deal with a property where you've got to remove buildings, rework them. It can be very, very expensive. So that actually impacts value. But we were able to get that amount of value that we paid the school system and get that out of this deal. The rest of the property is just town property, um, for the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that'd be part of that project, an important part of that project for a variety of reasons. Um, that is the rest of the deal. So it's two separate, um, two separate properties to close, close in time, and, um, that's the offer. You see the offer, um, that's presented, it's the first two pages. So, um, there is a representative from the actual entity, that would be the purchasing entity, which I, I believe they go by Flocor. Short for Florida Corporation, I believe, maybe, or maybe Flowers, Flor- I'm not really sure. But, um, so that's Mr. Fabio Lemos, who's here in the audience. I believe, uh, he brought his son to educate him on these exciting matters for local government. So they're both here, uh, in tandem to, um, just to be here if you have any questions. So I'll say, um, the process we've considered, um, and talked about for some time now, is the, um, the sales process of the upset bid process, um, which is one sixty eight dash two nine, two zero nine. And under that process, the first step, which is where we are now, is basically for the town to receive a bid. And then basically the town, whether it's tonight or in two weeks, whenever you're comfortable, of course, um, it then proposes to accept the offer. Doesn't accept it, it just proposes to accept the offer. Basically saying, hey, we got an offer, we're thinking of accepting this off, this offer. The next step is, once the town's done that, then the, um, offer war is required to submit a five percent of the value, um, as like a good faith part of the offer. So that's step one, the board says, um, we propose to accept the offer. Then the offer war will submit a five percent bid deposit, that'll be paid, uh, to the town, um, we'll have that on file, we'll hold that, we won't cash it, we'll hold that. And then basically the next step is, once we've received that, there's a notice of offer that's published for ten days in the paper. Yet that notice will describe the offer, identify the property, the parcels that are at stake. And then, once that's in the paper, a ten day period runs, and that's where there's a, a chance for an outside party, a third party or a fourth party, can step in and make an upset bid on, uh, these properties. The amount of the upset bid, um, I mean, basically, it looks like it's gotta be around five percent in general, a little bit more than that, the way they do the form is a little awkward. But it's gotta be more than five percent above the existing amount. So, um, so if, you know, there is one, there's a new amount, then you restart the process. If there's not one, the ten day period runs, that phase is over. So anything after that would not be a qualifying upset bid amount. And then, um, I would bring back the last bid or this bid as it is, if it survives that process. I'd bring that back to the board for it to formally accept that amount. You're not bound to accept it at any time, but you go through that process and when I bring it back after going through those steps, then that's when you would accept it. We'd have a, a more formal contract and some other details that work out. Once you accept that, that amount, the basic terms, that is set, purchase price, basic terms are set. After that, then we can have the additional ability to go through, I mean, this deal, it'll have many aspects, but there can be a development agreement about how it's gonna be developed. There can be a joint use agreement for the parking lot, that can happen after those steps have occurred, and we can have time to negotiate those. Um, but we still have a closing date set or one that is, um, identified, subject to maybe conditions. So that gives both the buyer a chance to kinda start working on their plan, you know, bring it up, um, to get it a more sharpened focus plan on exactly what they wanna do. But again, remember, we already have a planned development that is in actually the zoning for that property. So that is done. And to the credit of the, uh, offer war, um, he and his group have indicated that they like the plan the way it is. And they said, um, believe it or not, they said, look, we may not build as many, um, for instance, residential units as your plan even calls for, that might be a max. Uh, maybe that will change, I don't know, but, um, that's where they were, um, during our discuss- discussions leading up to tonight. So, um, nothing really new except the offer and the amount. Um, you know, I do think, uh, it's a fair amount, um, it's well within, um, you know, the amount we've anticipated, um, in that regard. So with all the information, certainly I can answer any questions you ha- have. But at the end of this, and this is in my memo, you've got a few choices. One, you can just sit on it and think about it for a while, if there's more information you want, I can get that back for you. Another option is, um, you can say, it's fine, I like what it is, bring us back a little bit more formal, uh, purchase agreement, I can do that, perhaps as quick as two weeks. Or really, um, I'm not sure that would change much, but that's a, that's a reasonable, you know, next step. Or you can even move forward with what you have tonight and start the process with, uh, with a, you know, with a motion that says, it, it is our intent, uh, to accept the offer and move forward along the lines I just mentioned. You're not accepting it, it's just your intent, and I would bring you something back. It'll probably take, I'm guessing, a month to get through that, to bring it back for you. But again, you're not bound, but it's your intent to move forward with it, which would, that means that would move the process forward anywhere from two weeks to a month, uh, earlier than, um, it might otherwise go forward. So, um, that's pretty concise in terms of where we are. Um, I know y'all know this project, it's been, you know, kicked around for a while here for the last year or so. So, um, and you do have, I provide you with all the exhibits, including the, um, you know, what was approved by the board, uh, you know, with the planned development. And that's still there, still part of our zoning process, and it is applied and attached to that land. That is what it's owned, uh, you know, for the future.
I'm looking at, thank you, Paul, I'm looking at section seven point one, exhibit A, conceptual master plan. Is that the one we created or is somebody, has somebody else created that?
Help me again, which one, Mayor, exhibit one?
It's, uh, seven point one, section seven point one, exhibit A, conceptual master plan.
On page sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you. It's on page ninety five of the PDF.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, that's the plan that we approved.
That's the plan, did.
That is our plan that we.
That is our plan.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yeah, and they've, they've done no other site work or proposal, everything you see is what we have put together.
So, i- i- I guess the question would be if, if an entity buys it, they're not, uh, they don't have to go with what we drove on this plan? They can alter it?
No, they would, they would.
Yeah.
They would.
Yeah, they would.
Well, I, I mean, I'm looking at the roads and, and the number of houses in there.
Yeah, we, we approved over a concept with a maximum number of homes.
Uh, I, I'm, but I'm saying, he's.
But what he wants for that.
They're saying that it, they may change that.
Yeah, they, they're talking about that they're supposed to, they may reduce the number.
They can build, they can build up to that maximum there.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Or they can build fewer, you can always build fewer. And if there's an adjustment to the site plan, they have to come back, if it's a minor adjustment, a tweak, they could do that in-house. If it's a major adjustment, just like anybody else with an approved, uh, planned development, they have to come back to the board to do that. And a- as you know, Mayor, there's lots of options for the road. I would be surprised if there won't be a reworking of the roadways to make it work. That, I think, is probably just gonna be part of it, but we have to start somewhere.
I don't remember, because this has been a while back now. I know we approved something like this with, I can see roads and houses in there, I don't know, what do we base that on? Was it R twenty? R ten?
I think it was R twenty.
Was it R ten? Was it R ten?
That was your, one of your planned developments, right?
Yeah, and ju- just remember, and I think we talked about it during the PD, uh, when we got it approved, is that there is zone, is specific areas with density. The exact alignment of the roads, based off topography, once they go survey and, and the design, will shift, and so, uh, but the density.
That goes to the TRC with site plan review.
Yep.
So, so what we, I guess, if, if it was a R ten, then this was maybe laid out to my R ten.
Correct.
All right, so that, that, the only way you, that could be changed, we can't change it now, we've already decided.
They can come back.
With a board action.
They can ask for it.
They can ask for it.
That's right.
But they can't go above what's showing here, but they can go below it.
Yes.
Correct. That's right, absolutely.
That's correct.
And there's one other question, you know, on that, well, it's not up there. Uh, the property that the water tank's on, is that for sale?
That, that is part of it, that's right. And there's, uh, specific provisions in there that allow us to, uh, maintain, if needed, any kind of cell tower lease or that sort of thing.
Well, my question would be, if somebody buys that property, what if they wanna take the water tank down?
Then they can do it.
That's my point.
We don't use that well anyway, right?
We don't use a water tower. If they would take it down, I would thank them profusely.
Do what?
I would thank them profusely.
Well, I understand that, but we've got cell towers all, all over it.
Right, and that's, that's where we have the ability to maintain that, but, um, we can't sell the property and then make them keep a water tower just so we have cell towers there. But if, and their intent at this early stage is to maintain that and make a, a useful structure out of it, um, but that may change, so. Trust me, the amount of benefit without those cell towers greatly outweighs just keeping cell towers there.
You gotta paint it, maintain it, you know, it shouldn't give us any water.
Yeah, 'cause we're having to maintain that structure.
Right.
At our own cost.
They were up there the other day, wasn't it?
Well, I know, I mean, it's, it could be repainted at some point, but.
Yeah.
I was, my consider- consideration would be if we lose, if we sell it to whomever and they decide to tear it down, then where, where do these cell companies go? Now, we do get.
I guess we'll work with them to find them somewhere else to go.
Well, it's, it's water tanks.
Yeah.
And just, and I know, I brought this before, like, many years before the board, as a concept to take it down. And, and in that concept was taking down, uh, the water tank and putting up a monopole.
Yeah, that, we had talked about that before. Yeah, that, we had talked about that before.
There could be some type of structure erected if the tower came down, if not, but, or the cell carrier that's owned there now might look to relocate to another structure, you know, if it decides to be taken down, so.
Something we can work with them in the, in the future, when that comes across our desk.
Yeah, that's, that take, I think the board needs to take some of this in consideration, the fact that it is surrounded with cell phone tower relays on it, antennas. Okay.
I have a question before we... Where are we, this is a work session, so I mean, I'm not, I was gonna ask this question tonight, anyway. So considering the two pieces of property that we're going to maintain, that we're gonna keep, auditorium and the gym, I do realize we use the gym quite a bit with our recreation center, correct? I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what...
With our own parks and records?
Yes, sir, yes.
No, we really don't.
We don't?
I mean, it's offered, it's there, they want it, but they haven't...
Okay.
They haven't found a way to program it, and I think just, until it gets renovated, they're kinda holding off and relying on too much. Now, we do have some rental options between others, a volleyball user, there's indoor soccer during the winter, so it's getting, getting some use, and it's not a ton of, a ton of use, but it's, you know, keeps it a little bit of money flowing.
And, and I know I was one of the commissioners that was really in favor of us keeping the auditorium, but to date, we haven't really done anything with the auditorium, other than renting it to people. So if we're not gonna put the money financially into renovating it, putting the sound system, and we're just gonna keep waiting around for somebody who wants to come and take it, I mean, is that, would that still be an option, to sell the property with those two pieces? I mean, I know I sound like I'm double-talking here, but if we're not gonna get anywhere with those two pieces, is that even an option at this point?
The sequence, the sequence has always been, and we're just at the first step, to sell the property first, and then that'll give us some funding to renovate both the gym and auditorium. So we're at that first step, so no, I don't think that's changed at all.
And I'm not ready to give 'em up, I'm just saying, that if we're not gonna, if this is the time to do it, if we're not gonna really take 'em on and do something with those properties, and we can find a buyer who wants that whole property that's gonna do something, is that just, is something we can consider at this point? That's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it's an option, but that's a, that's a big change, of course, that we've been talking about. But again, the first step was to sell the remainder property, and then use those funds to renovate the auditorium and the gym.
I make a motion that we move forward immediately with a motion with the intent to accept the offer subject to the ten day notice under the upset bid process.
Second.
Motion, and the second, other discussion. That was thirteen, we're down to number fourteen, other business.
Other business. Mayor, just for the record, just wanted to note, I think the board's seen it, all the great work on the tree trimming, on the bike park, and that you've all seen it, but it's, it's great, I really wanna thank Philip and Adam, who've done a great job on putting it together, and we did it with a contractor, who did a, who did a great job. And it really changes the whole look there. We got the park, that's gonna be coming here soon, I think probably, General Manager, maybe, they're working, he's working with it right now, Adam is. So it's really a big, a big step, and I think the other grounds at the lake have been going along well too, so long, I think it's a big, a big step in the right direction there, so we keep that one going forward. But yeah, it's, it's really pleasant, drive by there now and see.
Thank you, so nice, so nice.
That's one of the best things that's happened to Aberdeen, and I don't know why. I have never seen anything such a transformation on the, on the best one. I mean, I go out of my way to go to work, so I can look at it.
Actually, I actually, I actually picked up...
The ABC committee thanks you, right?
Actually... Yeah, I actually picked up one of our, I actually picked up one of our citizens and rode him around town for about an hour and a half on Saturday, and carried him down there. And he was just ecstatic, had the look of, he said he hadn't looked that good since he was younger, we'll put it that way. And so he was, he wanted to send his gratitude to the staff for their hard work.
I've had numerous people run across saying how much better it looks over there. And we have to stop and think, how many hundreds of thousands of cars went by there and never saw the light?
I know, it's great. They couldn't see it.
Not again.
There's a creek there, I mean, I think, I mean, I know it was, but I really didn't notice it.
There was actually two creeks there. I didn't know there was two. That was two.
The majority of the board is nowhere near that.
Raise middle pond.
Raise middle pond. Majority of the board is about a pond, and it's a raised middle pond.
Mayor, also, I know it's in the report, a lot of progress at the new library building too. The center's the below, I think you see some pictures.
Pilements, yeah.
The pilements, they look great, it's very dry under there, hopefully cross your fingers it'll stay that way for the foreseeable future. They got finished up the last two windows in the back, all the windows are done. So really, a lot of progress there in the last thirty days, so that's been a, been a big, a big step forward.
They had, the library staff had a, an event, and I think they raised about six thousand, something like that. So they're actively out there trying to raise money for this. Yeah, it was, it was a good turnout, very, very well turned, turnout, and they're, they're very active, they're doing reading, sort of, car... So, they're, they're, they're working on this, it's just, like anything else, it's gonna take a while to get this up and running, but getting the pilements helped out, getting the windows replaced, and taking those dagged old bars off those windows up there, so it didn't look like a jail. It changed the appearance, those are new ones.
Those are new, they're all new ones.
We're making progress on it, it's where we are, so we're gonna keep, keep it on that. And also, Mayor, just one thing, I know we missed a month of a meeting, so we've got a lot catching up to do tonight, but I want to thank John and his planning staff, because there's a lot of work to get where we are, and I think you saw several things that are finally kind of getting wrapped up, some delay because of just, well, DOD, some delay because of other reasons with funding, but it's good to get those things done, and the combinations that you mentioned, it won't happen overnight, but at least we've got a roadmap to get them, we're gonna start and get them, get them moving, so.
The Fourth Friday has been going well, we've been attending, several of us have attended that. I know I met one of the artists that also has a booth here at the Artist's League, and so she had invited me to come over, but they had a, like, small art opening two Fridays ago, and I went to that, and it was very good. They were glad to have, you know, some of the town peoples, anytime you guys can come in or go in and show your support, they, they love it, because they really are glad to be here in Aberdeen.
If you notice on your agenda, I was watching, if you look at what's on there from number five through number twelve, whose name is at the end of it?
John.
It was the John Show tonight.
And we attended John's retirement.
That's why he makes the big bucks.
And John, it was a good show.
Nice retirement, thank you, John, for inviting us to that.
Five through twelve.
Yes.
Yeah, now that he's retired from the Army, we're finally getting some work out of him.
That's right.
Keeping busy.
I would, I would like, if it's okay, Mr. Pearson would come up and tell us what's happening at the end of the month. Would you please come up with the museum, with, no, no...
Santa Claus.
With Santa, Elmer, Elmer.
Elmer.
Santa. We want Santa.
He, tell, tell what, what's, who's coming and where they're coming from?
My name is Elmer Piercehold, but everybody knows me as Santa Claus, 'cause I'm a professor...
Well, you got an S.C. on your hat, so...
Yeah, that's, but coming up the nineteenth of this month, Neuse River's coming down.
Do they tell them where they're from?
They're actually a train club, they have about forty, fifty members, they're coming down, they're gonna look at the station and everything, and see what we've actually done with the city and all of us working together.
And they're from where?
They're coming in to do that, they're from Neuse, the train club up there, it's up near Raleigh and...
Coming from somewhere out of Raleigh, something in that, in that area?
It's in that area, they'll be down here Saturday, we're gonna have coffee and donuts. You're all welcome to come over and meet with them and everything. And then, next year, if I remember correctly, I sent one to the city manager on the twenty-ninth of September, Model Railroad Magazine is coming in, they're gonna have a convention up in Raleigh, but they're coming down, they're gonna see the ACW and the Rockfish, and they're coming into our club to see it, which I've read the mail now, we're talking probably about a busload, which is about thirty or forty people coming in, that we're gonna give them, show them what the train club does and everything like that. So, from the work that we've done in the city with the caboose and everything, it has actually now become a landlord.
It's an attraction.
I mean, I had a group in there from last, two Saturdays ago, all the way from London, England, took a little bit of time to understand what they were saying, but they were so impressed, they actually asked if we would go over and do some of their caboos.
Oh, yeah.
But that ain't gonna happen.
Well, I just wanted the board to know that that Model Railroad Club has done a great job over there, number one, restoring that old caboose, and, and that model train in there is, is outstanding, and you've got people from, like you said, the Neuse River or Neuse Model Railroad Club coming out, probably Wake County or Durham County, somewhere coming down here to, to see it.
The other thing too, which I told the city manager, if you've been inside where the wall was falling apart, coming bought, a couple of the club members, we went ahead and fixed it, we did all the work, and you go in there now, you won't see where that wall was chipping and all that, it's, I mean, it looks great.
Those that grew up with model trains, which I did, if you know what he was talking about just then, he said Model Railroad Magazine, they've been around for, what, fifty, sixty?
Fifty, fifty-nine years.
Fifty-nine years, and the last time they came to Aberdeen was in the seventies, probably. They did the Aberdeen Rockfish Railroad in Model Railroad Magazine. It's, it's a, it's a slick publication, it's printed, like I said, probably sixty years it's been out there. So, and to have them come here again and, and do this is, is a plum for Aberdeen.
Yeah, 'cause Randy's coming with them, he's the one that came in, how this all started, they were down looking, just walking around, and they came in, and, of course, I do love talking, and next thing I know, they come back a week later with their photographer, and they took pictures of the whole inside of that station, the museum, everything, the caboose, and they were so impressed that they, he called me back and said, "We wanna have a tour on the twenty-ninth of next year." And I said, "Okay, fine, come on."
Well, this, this is good for Aberdeen, it's good publicity, and it's good for, to get the word out. Like I said, the la, I've got that, I still have that issue. The last time they did one was in the Saturdays.
Which I did make sure that I did it right, I gave a copy to the city manager, I believe, I got it under John. So we're pretty well set, basically, so when they come in...
Thank you.
We'll do the hard work, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, other business?
Yeah, I guess I would like to just say, I, I saw Jim Thomas, and he told me to tell everybody hello, and he thinks we're doing a good job down here.
Tell him hello to us.
He's very happy, so. It looks good.
Any other, other business? Any other? All right, I'm gonna go to number, close out fourteen, go to fifteen, close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, Prince Zay, Prince Zay five is established, or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other materials, terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property, a purchase, purchase option, exchange, or lease.
I make a motion that we leave open session and go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute.
Second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session, and we, we will get out to the conference room. Thank all of you for being here.
We are back.
We're back in the regular session.